I would like to call to order the Canton Administration Regular Board Meeting on August 10th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Welcome, everybody. This is our first time that we'll be doing a hybrid meeting, so this is the first time Canton Township has ever done anything like this. So, we will have, we're hoping not to have any technological issues. There might be some feedback, but we think we've practiced enough. Okay, great, thank you. Clerk Segrist, can you please call everyone to order?
I'd like to do the pledge of allegiance first.
I'll do the pledge first. Okay, we'll do the pledge before calling to orders. Everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Borninski.
I am here. Welcome to everyone who came to see us in person and welcome to those who are watching us online.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening, glad to be back.
Trustee Ganguly.
Good evening, glad to be here.
Supervisor Graham Hudak.
Good evening, everyone.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
And Trustee Snyderman.
I am here, hello.
Welcome to the new board also, who is the first time up here in person. You met some of our new people at the end. You've seen them on Zoom, but now you get to see them in person. I'd also like to say before we started, we just concluded a bank robbery at Ford Road and Canton Center Road. Nobody was hurt, so thank goodness our police and fire did a great job and nobody was hurt. The people that were in the bank were let go and also the suspect was apprehended without a shot being fired. So, thank you very much and I'm glad everybody's safe. Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Support.
Clerk Segrist, please take roll call on the motion.
Point of order, is it possible to suspend the roll call as we are not meeting virtually?
That's right. Can I, I'm so used to meeting virtually for over a year now. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Agenda adopted. Boy, this is going to be old habits break.
That was easy, a lot easier.
Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes from July 27th and 30th, 2021?
And Supervisor, I move to approve the minutes from July 27th and the 30th.
Of course. And I, sorry, I pressed recording on Zoom, is that okay? We're recording twice, we're recording on Zoom and in the back room, is that correct, both places, or do I not need to record?
Don't believe you need to record, but it's not going to cause an issue for us.
Okay, I'll stop it then. We only need one recording in the back. Okay, great, thank you.
Recording stopped.
So, can I, all those in favor of the approval of minutes, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Approval of minutes passed. We are now moving to public comment. Now, we're doing this two ways, we're doing this in person and also online for those at home. So, I'm going to start with the attendees, but before we do that, I'd like to have, we have two people here that might like to start with public comment. We have our State Representative Matt Colazar, if you'd like to start with public comment.
Sure, so first of all, great to see everybody in person here tonight. It's been a long time. So, I have a few things from Lansing that I wanted to bring up with the board. First of all, we are at a point where our school aid fund has been completed, but our general budget has not been yet, and I'll get more into that later on. But, let's start with school aid fund. A really, really good budget for Plymouth Canton schools. It's going to take the foundation allowance up to $8,700 per pupil, whereas it used to be at $8,111. So, that is huge. Another thing is we got about, a little over $10 million in what's called equalization payments. Basically, there was legislation that penalized schools that did not go back full face-to-face for a certain hour threshold per week. Plymouth Canton was penalized for that, even though their lower grades were going back full-time, upper levels were not. They were penalized, but a deal was worked out to properly get them the funding they deserved. I was a big, big pusher of this and really, really excited to get that money to Plymouth Canton to help our kids. So, that's some good things also in this budget. We expanded pre-K access to 250% above the poverty line, so went way up from where it was before. We are nearing that goal of universal pre-K. We also had increased investments in school psychologists and school social workers. So, a lot of really, really good things in this budget for schools. Now, in terms of local budget, local projects, things that Canton is looking for, that's going to be all hashed out in September. And I had a conversation just this morning with Representative Puri. He's going to be coming in the fall when that budget is complete to give you the update on that one. So, the local projects supervisor, Graham Hudak, you gave us a very thorough list, which we appreciate. We're advocating for those and we'll have a much better update for you once we get past the budget in the fall. Next, there's obviously an issue in Canton with big box stores and getting out of paying their proper property taxes. I reached out to a couple of different groups, most notably the Michigan Municipal League Today, to have a conversation about it. And where it is right now, there's a case in our court system, Eskenaba versus Menards. So, Menards won the initial case, then it went to the appeals court where Eskenaba won. Now, it was kicked up to the Supreme Court, who kicked it back to the appeals courts with a few other details they're working on. Right now, from a state legislative standpoint, we won't, we're standing by to see what the result is of this court battle because we can't necessarily make legis, we can't make legislation that's at odds with whatever comes out in statute. So, we're currently waiting in a holding pattern to see what comes out of the courts. But, I do recognize that this is a major problem specifically for Canton, I mean, a variety of communities across the state, but here locally, I think of Canton. So, I want to thank you for putting it on my radar. It's something to definitely keep an eye out for. But, from everybody I talked to today, we need to see what happens in that court decision before we can do much of anything. Before I go on to my personal, is there any questions on that before I go forward?
Thanks for pushing.
Next thing, a little bit of my work. First of all, I'm the ranking Democrat on the House Elections and Ethics Committee, and I would like to thank Clerk Segrist for when I received that role, he, I gave him a call and wanted that clerk's perspective, and I think he spent over an hour on the phone with me answering all of my questions. So, I really do appreciate that. Getting clerk input is incredibly important. I'm also returning to my role on the House Education Committee as well. I've passed three bills so far this term. One of them, I've touted it for years now, would guarantee that any child of a police officer or firefighter who loses their life in the line of duty will go to college at one of our state universities or community colleges tuition-free. I'm pleased to say that passed the House unanimously and it is currently in the Senate. Also, we passed, I passed a bill which had to do with the Auditor General's findings on how to make our elections processes a little smoother. What mine basically did, it's a bill that would adjust when the filing deadline is for lobbyist groups. So, that way, the Bureau of Elections isn't getting all these candidate committees and all of these lobbyists all at once. It helps improve their workflow because they have a very, they have a very small number of staff. And then finally, any candidate knows they have to do that $100 filing fee if they don't want to do signatures. This would basically take that money and gear it toward a fund that would be used to purchase new elections equipment rather than be refunded to candidates afterward. I know most candidates actually forget about that $100 and are shocked when they get it in the mail. I know I'm one of them. Finally, I'm working on other bills such as relating to student mental health, a parapro to teacher pathway, which will provide tuition assistance to parapros that want to become teachers. Again, the student mental health would allow student mental health days for students, holding corporate leaders accountable. Anyone whoever has seen anything I've done over the last three years knows I talk about landfills a lot, so work to hold them accountable. A tax holiday for school supplies, a weekend in August where sales and use tax will be forgiven on back-to-school stuff for our kids, as well as I'm on a bill package that would incorporate new holidays to be recognized by the state of Michigan. My bill in particular would be Vesakhi Day, which as in my, in this district, we know we have a substantial Sikh population. And again, there are a variety of religions that are represented in this package. I happen to have Vesakhi Day. So, with that, that is everything I am working on currently and I'd be happy to, and I almost forgot, and this is a Clerk Segrist, just a shout-out to you on this one, actually it was through Clerk Garrett at Wayne County. I'm working on a bill that would adjust the way candidate ballot proofs are sent to you. Right now, Wayne County is the only county in the state that has to send them certified mail. It is an incredibly huge expense to Wayne County because of the population threshold. This would adjust it so they would be in line with the rest of the state, which is first-class in electronic, so it would save substantial money for Wayne County. That's everything I've got, be happy to answer questions.
Clerk Segrist?
So, I'll do the best I can not to recreate the one-hour conversation about election law. But, I think one area for concern is that the House passed legislation that not only took the existing photo ID requirement in state law and required a provisional ballot to adjudicate the issue if someone doesn't have an ID or doesn't have an ID on them, they also passed a requirement that precinct inspectors check the signature of everybody who applies to vote in person. And so, from a systems standpoint with that, when I've read the law, that is telling me I have to do is have my inspectors ask for an ID, check the photo ID of the person in front of them, and then compare the signature in the voter file to the signature on the application. And if there's a discrepancy between those signatures, that person is not able to vote. So, somebody who shows a valid photo ID would not be able to vote in the precinct. Not only do I think that bill is illegal, I also think it's impractical. And so, I understand the Senate has talked about removing that provision from the bill. I would applaud them if they did that. Do you have any insight if that is going to occur? Because what that ultimately will do is it will jam up the precincts on Election Day and again, it could, it could, I mean, the absurdity is, the fight is like should someone have a photo ID or not, all across the state, the country. This would say, not only do you have to have a photo ID, but your signature has to be the same way it was when you registered to vote 40 years ago. That's absurd. That standard doesn't exist anywhere in law in any of the 50 states plus the District of Columbia. I can't believe they did that.
So, and what?
I saw you voted against it, so I appreciate that. I'm not dragging you.
I was vehemently opposed to the bill. Vehemently opposed. I talk about it all the time, but I think one part that is in addition, and this is personal opinion of why I was so opposed to that bill, in addition, you show your ID, then you sign, signatures don't match, you have to go back to the clerk's office within six days to verify. How do you do that? By showing the very ID that we started the whole process with. I absolutely 100% have been opposed, and from what I have heard, it sounds like the Senate is going to remove that signature requirement. But, at the end of the day, I am a supporter of what we already have. We already have a voter ID law in this state where you can simply fill out an affidavit attesting to your identity. It has worked. We had 18,000 people in Michigan use it in 2016, 12,000 used it in 2020. I don't see any reason we need to change that or update it as there has been zero evidence that this has been used in any widespread fraudulent case. And I've been singing that from the rooftops up in Lansing, but I 100% agree with you. I was vehemently opposed, but from what I'm hearing, they are going to remove that signature requirement.
That's beautiful. And then I would just point you to Ottawa County Clerk Justin Roebuck, who is Chair of the Michigan Association of County Clerks and is a very prominent Republican who is adamantly promoting the idea of syncing the voter driver's license database with the poll book so that an individual's photo ID would populate on the computer screen when you come to vote. So, if you forgot your driver's license, it doesn't matter because the photo ID is in the, is in the poll book. That would be the most common sense reform that would help assist voters. I would ask you to agree with that policy. I support that policy, I mean, you have your own opinion, but it's a good, it would be a good reform. It would expedite the process for voters and it would allow people to accidentally forget their driver's license, which happens a lot more frequently than you would think. And, you know, so that's one thing that would be awesome and the software, it may be costly to implement that, but the technology is there. And the driver's license, the database and the, and the voter registration database are required to be linked per the national, you know, the voter.
I have heard of, by the way, just the syncing up to address that, I have heard of that as well and I am supportive.
Okay, that's fantastic. Outside of that, we need more time to process the ballots. The Senate bill that was proposed, the Monday before an election for pre-processing is woefully inadequate. We, I would ask if you can go back to Chair Bolan and your colleagues on the, on the Election Commission, the Election Committee, please ask, Friday would be a lovely time for us to be able to start pre-processing absentee ballots. If there's a way to do that, most states, most states already do pre-processing or processing early and for a substantial amount of time. I would greatly appreciate that. Again, because it will save us money, it will save your municipality a substantial amount of money in equipment and in people. We don't need to staff up 40 to 50 people on Election Day to do a mad dash, to try to frantically count 42,000 ballots in 11 hours and then have the press and conspiracy theorists coming up with all types of weird theories about why these ballots weren't counted in, you know, five seconds. It's like, okay, give me $2 million and I can count them in an hour, you know, but we can't do it, you know, it's just impractical. So, more time would be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Other than that, thank you very much.
Anyone else? And one more thing, I mean, we know some parks funding is coming down the pipeline from the governor, so if we could help us direct, if, do you know if it's coming through the DNR or through the county yet? Do we need?
We're not, not sure quite yet.
Okay, so we have a lot of parks in the pipeline, we're looking forward to that.
Absolutely. Does anyone else want to just like stand by while Clerk Segrist and I keep talking elections?
I think you got off lucky at one hour.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. Representative Colazar, thank you.
It's important, you guys, come on now.
We also have, actually, we have one more guest here, Speaker, that has to get to another follow-up meeting. So, we have Mr. Sam Caramango from GFL. Jade, do you want to give a little bit of update what's been happening with GFL and then we'll have Mr. Caramango speak?
Sure. I think as everybody's aware, there has been some trash hauling issues across, not just Canton Township, but across the region and the state, and I think even today we heard, and even in other states, there's issues. We've been working closely with GFL and Sam and his staff on trying to stay up to date as much as possible with where they're at on a daily basis. And I think it's been a few weeks since Sam has joined us, but just for him to give us an update from GFL's perspective on where we're at and maybe some things they have in the pipeline.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Caramango.
Oh, good evening, board. Thanks for having me. I want to give you a couple of updates on what, what is new. We certainly continue to face this labor problem, but we are taking measures to address the issue and attract and retain more people. We've implemented a hiring bonus, an attendance bonus, a referral bonus, all in the way of trying to attract and keep our workforce. The challenges remain, we're still about 20, 22 people short of, drivers short of where we need to be, but we are gaining some momentum. We've got a dozen people in the pipeline between interview, job offers, background checks, drug tests, and starting. So, we're happy about that and that's a good thing. We do have two HR representatives now working at the Wayne location to speed the process up, so there's not a person that can walk in there that doesn't get attention immediately in the way of an interview. There was some, some concern, we talked about a few weeks ago. We do have a couple of options if residents would like to drop off yard waste. You may or may not be aware of this, we've opened up that ability in our yard on Van Born and we've also opened up that ability in our landfill and compost facility in Salem Township. We have seen some activity there, not a ton, but we have some, seen some activity of residents that would like to drop off yard waste. Speaking of yard waste, I will tell you, with as rainy as it's been, as wet as this July has been, your yard waste volumes are up 22% over prior years. It's been quite a, quite a challenge on top of all the rest of the things going on. Another thing that was asked about was can Canton Township have their own dedicated call center line at GFL? And the answer to that is yes. We do have a dedicated line. I'll give you the number now and then I'll follow up with Jade and John with an email, but that number is 248-204-6757. And I'll repeat that, 248-204-6757. That's a direct Canton Township line that residents can call and go directly to our call center, to a dedicated line. I, I would like to thank you for the patience you've given us so far. It is troubling for us as well as any of our customers to have to wait to have their rubbish yard waste or recycling collected. As you know, we've been working from five days to six days, and there's been some occasions, we've worked seven days to, to catch up and keep up to try and start fresh again on a Monday morning. It's very trying for the employees, but it's, it's necessary. It's something that we have to do. We don't have the ability that a restaurant does to maybe close on a Monday or Tuesday and refresh our employees for the busy weekend. We don't have that ability. We must work and about the only thing we can do is extend that work week while we're having trouble. Glad to answer any questions.
Any questions on the board? Kate?
Yeah, I'm wondering, thank you for the information about the dedicated line for Canton residents. When is that manned? Is that available on the weekends in addition to during the week?
It's Monday through Friday. It's manned Monday through Friday. It's not manned on the weekends at this time, but if we feel the need to have that, I can, I can explore that.
So, yeah, for those of us that have pickup later in the week, sometimes we are getting pickups on Saturday or even I saw trucks on Sunday one time. So, if there is the availability to be able to contact someone on the weekend, I think that would be helpful for, you know, maybe not even just the people who have end-of-the-week pickups, but if, if your garbage hasn't been picked up by Friday evening, then what do you do? So, it would be helpful, I think, to, to have some way to contact on the weekend.
I made that note, thank you.
Just to let everybody know also, we also have the ability to put 32-gallon garbage cans in front to put your trash in for the animals. So, we do have that posted on the website, but just to let everybody know who's watching the board meeting. Diane?
Another follow-up, what? I'm sorry. Another follow-up to your, the call center is open Monday through Friday. What are the hours of that? Because I know my office gets tons of calls and I'd like to give them the number. So, what hours are they answering the phone?
Eight to five.
And will Canton hear, because I know when we call you right now, they get all the other communities, but they don't hear Canton. So, when they call this number, will they hear, this is the Canton dedicated line, that's one call that we get a lot?
Yes, yes, they will, it will, dedicated Canton line, yes.
Yeah, I would also like to reiterate Trustee Borninski's point that we need someone over the, like, we need this, if you can, manned over the, at least for the Saturday because I got, I have gotten a lot of calls and emails on Saturday because Thursday and Friday trash, like, I, my trash gets picked up on Monday and there is not a lot of delay, but people who are at the end of the week, a lot of people have called me and emailed me and they usually do that on a Saturday saying, hey, my trash still didn't get picked up. It was supposed to be picked up on Thursday. So, if we can, and I tried personally calling on a Saturday and, you know, there was, I couldn't, so if, if that would really help, if even for a couple of hours in the morning, if you can have someone manned that, that would really help. I know, I know there is a shortage, but this really would help the residents.
Okay, I have that down, we'll try to get that staffed on Saturday mornings.
Summer?
Hi, thank you for coming, or thank you for addressing the board this evening. When you came, I guess it was about a month ago, about four weeks ago or so, I think we were about, about a day behind on, on trash pickup and now we're from one day to three days behind, I think I read online. And I think at that time you said that you were 14 employees short and now you are 22 employees short. So, I want to know, what is the timeline for your plan to get back on track?
We're hoping to be on track sometime in August here. Again, we've got a dozen people in the pipeline working right now. We're getting closer, our route count is, is getting higher each day. So, we're off about 16 routes a day right now from me and where we would like to be. That number changes, we do have people come and go. That's why that number changed from 14, 16, 18 to 20. The other issue we have recently is the route manager for GFL that looks after Canton Township abruptly resigned. Those of you that know Nick Allen from a long, long time ago, he's now the route manager in Canton Township again, he knows it very well. So, he is the route manager back in Canton Township. Again, we can't do much, we can't control a whole lot about who comes and goes other than offering the bonuses we're offering. It's a tough time right now in this industry. I've never, I've done this my whole life, it's a tough time in this industry right now. I've never seen anything quite like this.
Another question is, you mentioned that there are alternatives for residents who want to drop off their yard waste. Are there, are there alternatives even in other communities for people that want to drop off their trash?
There's not many alternatives for dropping off trash. There are other communities that have the ability to drop off yard waste, Livonia, City of Albany would be one. We, we can discuss in greater detail the ability to drop trash off at both of the locations that I've mentioned. We can potentially open that up for a period of time. I would like to research it a little more, though.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Kate?
Thanks. This is sort of a question for both you and Director Smith, if you don't mind. I understand we have a new online form where we can report missed trash pickups also. And I was just wondering, what happened, like, if a resident fills that out, then what happens next? Does the information get compiled and sent to GFL or what exactly happens?
Yes. So, the same communication method that we use on the phone and via email every day with GFL is the same thing we do with that Excel spreadsheet. I believe last week we had 600 submissions to the online form and it is consolidated and sent in every day to GFL for the preceding days.
That, I, I'm really interested that we had 600 submissions, that's pretty incredible and shows that people are using the form, but also shows that we have a lot of missed pickups. So, I'm wondering if the board could get reports maybe weekly or quarterly about how many, probably not quarterly, weekly would be better, or monthly, about how many missed pickups are reported that way.
Sure, we can do that.
Stephen?
Sam, I, I'm not sure if you mentioned this, but the ability to fix your equipment trucks, has that improved any from the last time you reported?
It, it has improved some. The, the shortage is not only for drivers and helpers on the back of the truck, but there is a shortage of mechanics as well. We do work around the clock at that location at Van Born, around the clock with mechanic staff. So, we address as much as we can each day with the staff that we've got. I don't know if that answers your question, but I know there are some shortcomings on the truck. For instance, we had a hydraulic spill. I don't remember the name of the street, but I saw it this morning and we had that cleaned up today. So, there are, there are breaks that happen, but we do work around the clock on these trucks with the mechanics.
We, we have the automated recycling bins. Do you feel that if we had automated trash, that that would have helped this situation or because of the issues with equipment failing and not being able to repair it, we still would have had issues?
Automated trash is, is utilized in many areas. The more automated the equipment is, the harder it is to maintain. There's a lot of moving parts on the automated equipment, the arm that comes out, opens, closes, reaches high, reaches low. There's a lot of automate, a lot of movement on the automated trucks, a lot more hydraulic lines and a lot more exposed to the, to the street, to the lawn when a hydraulic line should break. But, they are used elsewhere, they probably have a greater tendency of breakdown than a conventional rear-load truck like you use now.
Anyone else? Thank you. We know that the drivers are working hard. Michael, go ahead. Michael, go ahead.
Sorry about that.
That's right.
Um, for those of you who just walked in, the individual is on the internet, that's who's speaking. I could see some confusion in the audience as to who is speaking, because this is our first, this is our first hybrid meeting, but anyway. I don't have any additional questions, other than, I think I do ultimately have, have just a long-term concern if we don't, if we don't actually have an aggressive implementation plan for addressing the labor shortage as it relates to drivers and, and trash pickup as we get closer into the year. Trash stays out at the corner longer. You potentially have a public health issue, you have, you know, animals getting into it, and, so I do think we, we need to start discussing what our options are with regards to solving this issue. We have to start looking at it, because we are making some assumptions that we're going to hire new drivers. I don't know, Mr. Carmagio, could you tell me, do you know what the hourly rate is for a trash truck driver in Michigan currently?
I should have shared what we're doing with you, or what we're doing currently. Our drivers start at $23 per hour. That's with virtually no experience. Drivers are paid up close to $30 per hour with experience with GFL. Our loaders on the back of the truck start at $17 per hour. Those are competitive wages in our industry, and I will tell you that this, this is not just a GFL problem. It is a problem with all haulers in Metro Detroit. I'm seeing news articles and Facebook texts and all kinds of media items. It's happening everywhere, and that's why we're working six days a week to, to, to keep this problem from being any worse than it currently is.
No, and I appreciate that, and that's why we're not browbeating you, right? Because we understand other vendors are under similar situations, similar circumstances. Other municipalities are in similar situations as well. And so, the problem is much bigger than who the vendor is or what the municipality is. The problem requires a substantial amount of individuals to come together to try to solve it collectively, and I just, I would ask that we start participating in that, or we pull together people at the regional or the state level to really address this issue. Because if, if we don't solve the labor issue, that puts it, you know, then this becomes the new normal, and I don't know what that looks like if trash stays out at the corner for days on end. I don't know what, I don't know. I don't want to see rats in my neighborhood, and that's, that's kind of my comments.
I would, I would agree with you. I, I don't like how it looks right now. Again, I've never seen anything even close to this, but, you know, we will, we will go out and partner with you, whatever we need to do. I am partnering with, with the City of Inkster. I met with them, they have similar problems. They're having a job fair, 12th, which I believe is Thursday. We're going to attempt to partner with them and do something. I've also talked with Lincoln Park, they're going to have a, an event, we're going to partner with them and try to get some attention for drivers. And, you know, you don't really have to come to GFL with a full-blown CDL. If you come to GFL with a permit, a truck driving permit, we will train you to get your license, we'll take you to the driver, the state certified instructor, pay for that license. We'll go as far as that to get you driving one of our trucks and drive one successfully.
Thank you. We know the drivers are working hard. Like you said, on my street alone, we saw the driver was alone, so he was driving and he got out and loaded. And so, we understand that they are working 14 hours a day. We do see that, and we, we know our residents are being very kind as, you know, as they see that, because this is a nationwide issue. And so, we do see also, though, that some of your drivers that have been on that route for a while, those routes in particular don't seem to have the trouble. It's the ones where the new drivers are. So, we are seeing that, just to let you know. We are in touch with you daily. I know Jade is. We get calls in our office, and we are talking to you daily. So, we will definitely stay on top of this, and please keep us informed of any changes.
Good.
Anything else on this? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have to go into your next meeting there. Okay, so we will now go to the, yes. We'll go into the public comments that are online, and remember, please give your name and whether you're a resident or a business, and it's three minutes, and we will go over to attendees. Our first attendee is Dan McCausland. It's listed as here, so Dan, I'm going to switch you on electronically here. I always use, you're going to be promoted for that, okay. Can you hear me, Mr. McCausland? No. Dan, can you hear me? Hello, Mr. McCausland, go ahead. Hmm. I can't see, I'll try one more time. Mr. McCausland, can you hear me? Okay, so we'll go over here. He's the only one that I saw online with his hand up. Okay. Hmm. It's not moving. There we go, okay. Okay, so we will, might come back to this if he comes back online there. Anybody in the room, you can please go up to the podium and give your name. Who would like to, sure, go ahead. Yes. Oops, sorry, we have someone up ahead. Just a second, I'm sorry, sir. Okay, state your name, please.
Hi, how you doing? I'm Rich Keen, I'm a citizen here, Keen. I'll be very, very brief. I just have a, a basic question, and I think was spurred by the deputy position of supervisor, and I think there's some additional deputies positions, although I haven't seen that. And the question really comes down to, in the past year, in 2019, 2020, there's been a number of things that were budgeted in the township that the township has not done, whether it's Liberty Fest or fireworks, or the teachers may be another example, where many didn't go to schools, or they didn't go into lights, et cetera. And the question I have is, we have spent money for a number of other things that may not have been budgeted at that particular point in time, but then we say, okay, we have money in the budget because of that. Is there any sort of accounting that says, this is where the budget was in 2019 or 2020 versus 2021, and what we may have saved in these years or didn't do versus what we're doing in this year or next year? And basically, as a means of going forward, there's people paid a lot of taxes, a lot of taxes in Canton, and this is the citizens' money. So, that's really why I'm just, you know, questioning where that's coming from, from an overall standpoint of whether we're to spend it, and then rather than looking at something as being a windfall for the government, to say that there's an opportunity to turn around, and we account for it, and we may save it here, we may have spent it there.
Okay, thank you. Just, I'm going to take a point of order here, just to let everybody know that there will be a, we will be going over the budget in our 24th, August 24th meeting, and then one after. Wendy, I'm sorry, our finance director is not at the desk right now. So, we will be doing that, and there was, and there also was, as point of order, a lot of incorrect information being passed around about the deputy supervisor position and the funding and that, so, but that will be coming. We're going to be having a session on that. Okay, thank you, thank you. Next, you want to go ahead? Sure.
I am, I'm Lyle Chaffin, and I've been Canton resident since Jim Poole. And I've worked with a lot of the chief CEOs in Canton, okay? The last one was, was William, was Pat Williams, okay? And, and this is all about hiring an assistant for you, right? Right, okay. And this, I have, I have the paper here that was from the Observer, okay? And a lot of his, a lot of the chores for the, the new, the assistant, okay? It's going to be administrative, take care of supposedly, according to this, the overload, I don't see why you go from 155,000, and believe me, I know what, I know what each of them, Pat Williams on back, I don't know, all the way to Jim Poole, I know what they make, okay? And, and this, this, this coming in here with up to 225,000, okay? Then that only lasts for three years, until you're out of office. Then the person that precedes you can keep them or get rid of them, okay? If I were that person, I would say, great, I want to, I want you to hire me for three years, and then I'm going to quit, because I'll have 600, 675,000 in the bank, and I can retire, okay? I think it's a terrible waste of money to, to have someone and then tell people that it's not unusual for assistants to make more than their boss, okay? I, that, I don't like that. I don't think it's bad. And according to a lot of the people in Canton that read this article, okay, I've never seen so many people cut it out, cut it out, because they're generally, they're angry. They're angry, and, and they have, they have people that, for example, yeah, I think it's the services, there was an inspector, her name was TJ, and she was an inspector, and she retired. And as of about a month ago, I spoke with someone, and they haven't replaced her, okay? That should be done.
Thank you, Mr. Chauvin, thank you. Your three minutes are up, and as I said, there's misinformation, and we'll be talking about it soon, but thank you.
Okay, I, I'm sorry that I took too long, but...
No, thank you for your comments, I appreciate it.
Okay, can I get up for my other question?
You have another question?
Sit here.
On another topic? Okay, I'll give you two minutes on another topic.
My topic was, my other topic was, in, I have a copy of the focus here, okay? A copy of the focus. And right here, right here is a mail voting, okay? Mail voting, right here. And the first line, the first line says, residents have the right to vote in every election ahead of time, okay? That's not right. I have the definition of resident here. I can take, I can take an undocumented alien and put him in an address right there, and he can vote, okay? Now, if you put him in, if you put him in a motel, he can't vote. That's the definition of, it should be, that, that first word on that line should be, should be documented or citizen rather than resident. And, and I fail to see how the government wants to spend so much time getting information from me to vote. I don't see that. And if you go to someone's house, the mere fact that they own the house, they have documents and certification. See?
Thank you, Mr. Chauvin, thank you. Next, anyone else?
Yeah, just the other floor?
Yes. Can you go up to the podium, please, so we can hear you? Thank you. Please state your name.
I'll grab them.
Go ahead. I'll grab them if you want to go to the podium.
Please state your name, and if you're a resident or a business owner.
Yeah, my name is Bob Seeslack, and I live at 42203 Greenwood Drive in Canton.
Okay.
And I have lived at that residence now for over 35 years, and for over 35 years, I've been trying to get something done about the Willow Creek flooding. On June 26th, we had a, I don't know, five or six inch rainfall, and if you look at the attachments, you'll see that is my backyard. The first sheet, the first picture, that shows that I have a river of 150 feet wide by eight feet deep. And the second sheet will show, the second picture will show the outlet pipe from the sewer that comes out between the houses. And now I have got a crack in my basement wall that's leaking water into my basement that I've never had before. And I've been trying to get help from Canton, I've been trying to get help from Wayne County for over 35 years, and I've gotten nowhere. I'm not quite sure what I should do next. I can't sell the house. I've talked to realtors, and they've told me you have to be upfront about the flooding concern. Are you, the people can come back and sue you after the close of the deal. The house is appraised at 150,000, less than 150,000 right now, and houses in the neighborhood are going for over 300. But I've got this, I am the lowest point of the drain on Willow Creek in, in Willow, in Pickwick Village. I'm not sure what I can do.
Thanks, Mr. Seeslack. So, we'll get you in touch with our, if you call in the morning, Jade Smith, he's our municipal services director right there, and he can also interface you with some FEMA, any FEMA paperwork you can fill out through our FEMA representative, and also working with our county representative.
But I want some help with the creek. I...
We, yeah, we get, Mr. Smith can help direct you if you want to call the office, okay? And he can, he can walk you through your, all of your issues.
I've been through this 50 times, and I don't get anywhere.
Okay, this time you will, thank you.
Madam Supervisor, I would just ask if I could speak just briefly, because some information was shared, and I just want to make sure, from public comment, I don't know if there's additional public comment, but I do want to address the fact that nobody in Canton Township is paid $225,000 a year. Nobody in Canton Township will be paid $225,000 a year for a very, very long time. That would require a substantial amount of inflation. I can appreciate what was printed in the newspaper, but I can assure you, and I can't indicate that, but what I can do is notify the public that at no point in time will anybody be, be making a salary of $225,000 a year. So, that is, that is, I think, important to note. I, I do believe on the 24th, the board might be looking at a contract that is in line with what the directors in the township make, which is larger than the elected officials, because for four years, we have turned down routinely pay raises. So, that is important, I think, to note, that that number, 225,000, is not factually accurate. I just want to put that out there. And then additionally, to vote in Michigan, you, yes, you must be a US citizen, and you must be 18 years of age by Election Day, and, and you must reside in the precinct that you want to vote in. So, all qualified voters in Michigan have a right to vote by mail, as established in 2018.
Okay, so, sir, so we, it looks like we have one more person at the podium. Please state your name, you have three minutes, whether you're a Canton resident or a business.
My name is John Pickett, and I've lived in Canton Township since 1974. I worked with Robert Greenstein, if some of you remember him, who started out going subdivision to subdivision, starting Neighborhood Watch. He fought to get the police department in here and the fire department to make Township proud, all the way up to Pat Williams. They were able to do the job. What I'm seeing with the article he's talking about is that there's six people up there who feel they can't do the job. Now, if you can't do the job, what I'm asking you to is resign your position. If that doesn't work, maybe we as residents ought to get together and see if we can't recall you and put someone to do the job, instead of having you guys say you're overwhelmed with the job. Pat Williams wasn't overwhelmed, Robin Greenstein wasn't overwhelmed, Jim Poole, Tom Yak, but you guys seem to be overwhelmed with the job that you can't do. But you guys seem to be overwhelmed with the job that you can't do. Instead of you hiring a deputy supervisor, why don't you turn around and hire more workers to go out there and do the job? And as far as collection of the garbage, the first thing that comes to my mind is they solved that problem before up, up north in what's called Middleton, Middleton, which is next to Flint. Instead of collecting the garbage every week, they said because of the problems arose in '20 and '21, they're telling the residents to do it every other week. But we can't, we didn't have the brains to come up with that ourselves. I'm just, I'm just dissatisfied. I've lived here for 47 years and to see what we've created, looking at you guys, I think, oh, holy crap, we really messed up because I'm leaving this to my grandkids. And I go, boy, did we screw up Canton by, with this fiasco of the election we had in 2020. You guys-
Thank you, Mr. Cislak.
Don't tell me thank you, you know, the thing is, you get to speak, you know what? I should have spoke to you when you were in that restaurant over there, sitting there for three hours and sitting in here doing your job.
Thank you, Mr. Cislak, thank you for your comments. Okay. All right, we have one attendee that's going to speak. We have one attendee that's going to speak, order please. We have one attendee, Mr. McCoslin. I'm going to try this one more time. Why do you have to promote it? You shouldn't have to promote. Okay, Mr. McCoslin, can you hear? Mr. McCoslin? Is he not hearing us on Zoom? Can we have order, please? Mr. McCoslin? Okay. Mr. McCoslin, why don't you call the office tomorrow? I'm sorry, for some reason, can't pick you up here. Yep, he is in panelist. Attendee? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is payment of bills.
Madam Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Now we have a presentation on the capital improvement plan. Jay, do you want to introduce?
Yes, I will. All right, thank you, Board. Since recently taking over Facilities Division within the township and working with Plant Moran Cressa on the capital improvement program that was approved back in 2019, it was a five-year project. I wanted to bring forward John Cislinas, who is our new facilities manager, and Andy Fountain, who is from Plant Moran Cressa, to kind of give an update. What, for one, for you to put faces with names because they've been on board for quite a while. And then two, to have them give us an update as to where we stand with the overall CIP project and some, some of the things that have transpired since the beginning, one being COVID. So it's delayed us a little bit, so we kind of have a new action plan moving forward. So I'm going to turn it over to, to Mr. Fountain from Plant Moran Cressa to walk us through the rest of the presentation. We don't have anything formally to show on the screen, it's all in the memo and the documents that I put in front of you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, Board. Again, my name is Andy Fountain. I'm with Plant Moran Cressa. Plant Moran Cressa was engaged by Canton Township to act as the owner's rep for the capital improvement program or CIP program. Over the last several months, we've been meeting regularly, regularly with the project team in relation to the capital improvement program. During that time, we've, we've identified a couple of different items that we'd like to recommend to you this evening to adjust our approach as we move forward to implement and execute the work associated with the CIP program. I believe you have a copy of the memo that I'm going to be reading from. I'm going to spare you from reading every word. I'll give you the Cliff Notes and I'd be happy to take any questions at the conclusion of, of my presentation. So we've worked again with, with the project team, developed a series of four recommendations for you this evening. The first recommendation is related to the projects in the, in the associated scope. During our conversations with, with the project team, it was discovered that many of the projects were handled in what I'll describe as a one-off situation where they were designed and then executed or the work took place one at a time. While this, while in some instances, this, this approach makes sense, given the, the scope of the remaining projects, we believe that there may be an opportunity to realize some efficiency. And our first recommendation would be to take these projects, bundle them into like and kind work and bid them through a series of bid packages. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in, in one of the recommendations coming up. The second recommendation that we have for you tonight relates to the procurement of design services. So through our conversations with the project team, we discovered that there are two different architectural firms that are currently engaged with the, with the township. However, their contracts are not set or fixed to a program budget. So again, they're handled as more of a one-off situation where a project comes up, it's priced individually, and then the design services take place and then the project is executed. We're recommending this evening that we enter into negotiations with the two firms that are currently under contract, that's Partners in Architecture and A3C. And our recommendation is that we take those projects, once we bundle them into like and kind, develop a program budget, that we negotiate with either one of those firms to arrive at what we would describe as a fixed fee. This will allow for efficiency, it'll also allow for you to realize the economies of scale associated with these, with these projects. Our third recommendation this evening, similar to the previous recommendation for architectural services, relates to the procurement of construction services. Again, the, there are several firms that have been working over the course of, since the, the program started prior to Plant Moran Cressa's involvement. And these contractors have been engaged in a, in a one, a one-off situation to address various needs that have been designed and, and awarded. Similar to the, the recommendation with architectural services, we believe that there's an efficiency that can be gained by bundling these projects in like and kind and then issuing an request for proposal to solicit proposals from construction managers that will then be assigned, will work to establish a fixed fee and then also have one, one group that we are able to coordinate with to implement all the work that's designed by your architectural firm. The fourth and final recommendation that we have for you this evening relates to the CIP budget. We're recommending this evening that we, we take a second look at the, at the budget that, that we're currently working from. Through our conversations with the project team, it's, it's, it's come to light that number one, the, the budgets that we're using are, are based on cost information that was provided in 2017. The market has escalated quite a bit. Conditions today are quite a bit different than what we had in, in 2017. So we'd, we'd recommend that we, we take a second look at that and make sure that as we move forward with the program, we have the appropriate funding to address all the CIP needs that are, are, are left to be addressed. With that, that kind of takes me to my, the conclusion of, of our recommendations this evening. I'm happy to take any questions and again, appreciate the opportunity to, to speak with you this evening.
If I can add just something to that as well, thank you, Andy, for going over that. I really wanted to bring the board's attention to recommendation number two, which is the procurement of the design services. We do have the two design firms that are very well-versed and familiar with the township facilities and they are currently doing work for the township in other capacities. So it makes sense to work with them on that level and forego the purchasing process and come back to the board with a recommendation at a later date. Partners in Architecture, as you know, is working on the fire, had just recently finished working on the fire station, is working on some other public safety tasks. And then at A3C has worked on this building specifically in the past as well. So they're very familiar with our staff and with our, with our facility. So it makes sense to, to start with those two. So I'm really hoping to get some feedback from the board in regards to that tonight. And then I don't want anyone to be scared about recommendation number four with the reallocation of the program budget. It's just a reality that the budget was set in 2017 and the estimates were done. And then as you all know what's happening in the market right now, it's, we, we need to go back out and reallocate and relook at what we have. Doesn't mean that projects may not get done, it just means that they may have different scales or different levels of completion and we'll have to go through and prioritize all of that when we, when the bids come back in. So everything will continue to be bid out as, as it, as it was proposed and we'll have to make those decisions when the bids come back in.
Thank you.
And the other thing, this program does keep us on our five-year timeline, so completion for all of the CIP work will be completed in 2023.
Questions or comments? Steven?
Thank you both for that information. So Jade, just as a preface to all this, can you explain what was the impetus to bring in Plant Moran to do this study? Was this part of the CIP that when we started it, we said we would take a look at this in year two or three or something like that? Or you just wanted to, coming out of COVID and every, the pandemic, we wanted to refocus on what we were doing?
Actually, Plant Moran, so right before, and Greg, you'll have to correct my dates if I get anything wrong, but prior to COVID, we had gone out to bid for what's called an owner's rep, which is somebody that comes in and represents the township in basically an employee capacity and does the negotiation and, and when they, they do a lot of the technical tasks that staff would do. So as opposed to hiring an additional staff member for the, for five years for the capital improvement projects, you go out and you secure an owner's representative, which we did go out to a formal bid and that was awarded in 2000 and, I'm trying to remember, end of 2019. Bids were due back in 2019 and we were getting ready to award it and then COVID hit. So everything kind of got suspended. I believe at the end of 2020 is when we went ahead and awarded the owner's rep contract. So that's where we're at now. So when they came on board, there is an onboarding phase that we just went through where all of the projects, they became familiar with them. Some of the projects we did in-house on the CIP that were listed on the CIP. So this is really just, like I said, getting them introduced to you because there's never been a formal introduction and then also just giving an update. So not that we would not like to hire Andy, but at the end of five years, Andy and, actually there's another colleague that I forgot to mention, Kevin Donnelly, who is under the weather today, was supposed to be here as well, he's no longer here. But Andy and Kevin will no longer function or, you know, they're not employees of the township, so once the CIP project is done, their services are rendered, so.
Okay. And is one, so I, in the past, we've gone through the CIP and updated on, and you sent it, you sent us the spreadsheet and I saw that. Are there decisions we're going to have, have to be made in the next coming months on things that we either don't do or that we push off?
That's hard to say right now and maybe Andy could speak to that, but I don't know that we'll know what we need to adjust until we get the bids back and relook at the budget.
I'm just wondering with the way construction and other types of services are today, if, if it would pay to wait a little bit on some of these things and only do the things that are the most crucial, and I'm sure that's what you're looking at.
Right, and, and I think the good thing is, is that if we bid it out and we don't like the pricing, we don't have to award the bid.
Okay.
So we always have that ability to actually suspend that bid and then go back out to bid at a later time. But that will, because it was an approved CIP program that actually has bonded dollars associated with it, we do have some obligation to complete that. I would have to confer with Wendy to see how easy it would be to eliminate a project out of the, out of the mix. But I, we think, when we started this, we had over 170 individual projects on the list. So if one or two or some of those fell off, I, I don't foresee that being a problem because we also had not just the bonded dollars, but we had township dollars allocated for this as well.
I remember last time you presented, you presented things that had been done in-house, as you said, that didn't use the bonded dollars, which allowed us to use them for other things as well, so. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Kate?
Thank you, just a comment, I wanted to thank you, Andy, and then also Director Smith for bringing these recommendations to us. They make a lot of sense and I think will be very good for the township as far as making sure that we're efficiently using our, our dollars. So thank you.
Anyone else? Tanya?
Yeah, so thank you so much for this memo. And I just wanted to know, and giving me a lot of clarification, Director Smith and Director Trumbull, this morning I had a lot of questions about how these budgets are prioritized and they gave me detailed explanation. I just want to understand, after this, you have presented this memo to us and so what is the next step? Do we have to approve anything or are you going to bring us recommendations in the future for, you know, these are the budgets that we are going to, these are the projects that we are going to approve or these, this is what we plan to do as you bundle things up?
Right. There's no decision that's needed tonight on anything. This is more of just an update because of the, the massive dollar amount that we are spending. But this was just to kind of give a, some recommendations as to how we're going to move forward and then we will come before you for any of those decisions in the future. The one that we would like some comments on is the, the design services because I think that's something that's going to be very important for us to start now. For all of you that don't work in this building and other buildings, we have some major HVAC issues throughout the entire township at all of ours. So that design services will be used, used to properly design and make sure that we have the right heating and cooling systems moving forward. So because we're coming into the end of summer, it's very important that we get that designed, get it bid out, and that way we can have everything up and running by the spring of next year. Because we're finding out right now that HVAC units, some units, they're out 12 weeks. So we've got, we've got some, some hurdles and some timelines that we have to adhere to. So that might be the most pressing. Andy, I don't know if you have more to, to add to that?
I think you, I think you addressed it rather well. Only thing I would direct you to is, I believe it's the fourth page, does have a milestone schedule. So if you're looking for sort of when things may happen, that might be helpful as far as, you know, recommendation for, you know, architectural services, when we intend to come to you with a recommendation for construction management services, things like that. So hopefully that's helpful and if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Diane?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I do like the bundling of it because we did over the summer, the heating and cool, or cooling was not working in half of the building and it was, it was quite difficult for the, not just the residents, but the employees to work in that heat. So this is definitely something I appreciate that you've come up with. So thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
Alice? Okay, great. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks Jade. Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Could I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider second reading of an amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances regarding Anderson rezoning. Item C2, consider approval for the purchase order increase to Miracle Recreation for playground equipment. And item C3, consider the WTUA or WATUAA annual budget approval.
Support. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Nay? Motion approved. I don't know if we have Mr., I don't see, just on that. Yeah, for anyone from Matua, Aaron's not in. Okay. Sometimes someone from Matua will come for that particular item. All right, the next item on the agenda, it will move to the general calendar. Item G1, consider entering into contracts with subdivision HOAs for the 2022 and 2023 residential road millage program.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve Canton Township enter into contracts with the following subdivisions for the 2022 and 2023 residential matching program. The 2022 list is attached as well as the 2023 list. 2022, Cobblestone Ridge, Sierra Heights, Buckingham Place, Willow Creek, Stonegate Oakvale, Glengarry Village 1, Huntington Place 2, Kimberly Meadows, Fox Run, Savannah Point, Parkview Estates Phase 2, Sunflower Village, Fairways West, Pickwick Village. 2023 list, Stonegate Oakvale, Proctor Road, Apartment 2, Glengarry Village Number 1, 2, Windsor Park Sub, Nowland Estates, Brookside Village 5, North Point, Stratford Park, Franklin Palmer Estates, River Park Subdivision, Pinewood Subdivision, Mayfair Village, Wilshire Estates. And Glengarry Phase 3, Century Farms, Willow Homes Association, Kirkway Subdivision, Central Park Phase 1.
Support.
Thank you. Canton began the residential matching program in 2020 via funding from the approved road millage. Engineering Services is now developing the program for 2022 and 23. As described in the road millage presentation, 30% of the millage funding will go towards residential programs, which is approximately 1.6 million per year. 38 applications were received in June and July of 2020. Thirty-eight applications were received in June and July of 2021. From these applications and the known budget, Municipal Services has developed a list of projects that can be completed within the 2022 and 23 construction season. Jade, do you have anything to add?
Nothing at this time. I know that there was going to be some discussion in regards to some of the local roads. So I'll just answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions? Steve, I think you had one.
Yeah, I had sent in a question and asked a field to talk about tonight, but first I just wanted to say that, you know, in 2016, 2017, to be able to read a list of subdivisions like that was probably a pipe dream for all of us, to be able to say that we're going to go in and fix roads in each and every one of these subdivisions. And I just wanted to thank the citizens or residents of Canton who passed the millage that allows us as a community to be able to do this. I think it's wonderful, and I'm pretty excited about it. I know we, this will be the fourth and fifth year that we've done it, but this list is as big as ever, and that just shows that there was a great need in our community. But the one question that I had is, and as many of you know, I'm on my bike a lot in the community, and I just wanted to understand how we, not restrict, but distribute the money for these things, because we have subdivisions that in some cases are one cul-de-sac, and we have subdivisions that are square mile, you know, square miles of homes like Sunflower. And I worry that we're never going to get there in some of the bigger subdivisions. And I was wondering if we could just discuss for a minute the plan to be able to do that. And I know it's not all the township, it's the county, and it's the homeowners associations and things like that, but Jade, if we can talk about that.
I can make a comment on that. I know Summer and Michael have been in some of the meetings too, because, and I think a lot of the talk up until now has been, how do we make sure that the smaller subdivisions are represented well? And so now we've got the opposite thing, the opposite issue. So one of the things that we do, it's a scaled contribution, scaled project based on the contribution of the association. So you're right, there is a limit to what we can do within a subdivision, but we only have so many funds to deal with in so many subdivisions. So we've created that scaled process. It was voted on, I believe, back when the millage was passed, and that's what we've been adhering to. And then as the applications come in, to make sure that everybody's on an even playing field, as they come in, that's when they get put in line. So there's nobody that can have double projects in one year unless we get to a point where we don't have any submissions, and then an association could come in, and we'll have to reevaluate that at that time. But right now, we are at capacity each year, and I believe there was even a sheet, the very last sheet in your RBAs and attachment, shows that we still have two, four, six, we have seven subdivisions that are already in the queue for after 2023. So there are some options for larger subdivisions that have some concerns and want to do larger projects, and that they can contact Engineering Office or my office, and we can talk about the special assessment process. I know that there are some larger subs that have expressed interest in that in the past and didn't like the answers that they got as far as what a cost would be. We actually have a couple of subdivisions right now that are working with Engineering to do some estimates as to what it would be to fix some roads to a, to a higher degree. These are not, this millage dollars, and correct me if I'm wrong for anyone that was on the board, but was not meant to replace roads. So we still have to adhere to the preservation of the road that's there, not a full replacement. And I think some of the big concerns by some of the bigger subs have, they have other issues that should be addressed through a different means than the millage dollars.
Okay, I think I would just add to that. I just wanted to make sure that the committee and also the administration is just looking at that. I mean, yes, we, we all knew that, I mean, many of us wanted to be able to pass a millage that actually could repair every road in the community, because I think the citizens would have wanted that, but that's, we knew there were limitations in the amount of money we could collect with this millage and what it could be used for. But we also looked through the Pacer study at the breadth of all the roads and all the subdivisions as one of the three prongs of our local roads, subdivisions and Ford Road kind of approach. And I just want to make sure that we're look, we're saying that where we can fix something, repair, replace, not replace a whole road, but replace a section of a road that is, has been a chronic problem, that people aren't penalized for living in a really big sub, right? And I appreciate your comment. I mean, the last time we spoke, I had the concern of neighborhoods that don't have homeowners associations and how they even know to ask for the money, so.
And actually, we do have a couple that have actually come forward that are not in formal association areas that are going to participate. The other, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I was saying, that's all I want people to be thinking about. I want to make sure that, and yeah, there has to be, and the county has to step up as well, I understand, but I want to make sure, because we've done some great work in Sunflower. I mean, the whole Hanford piece was really great, and then there have been some really terrible sections replaced, but there's a whole lot more in that subdivision, and only doing it once every three years or something like that, and that sub is not going to make it.
Right. And I think it comes down to the advocates of the residents in those larger subs too, to get with their association board and put the same pressure on them to put that project before the township for consideration.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Kate?
Yes, so you kind of touched on this a little bit, both you and Steven, but since we've had some groups of residents who don't belong to homeowners associations submitting applications for this, wondering how we can help them, help, you know, residents in the same situation, make sure that they can take advantage of the program. Is there any way that Municipal Services is able to reach out, or how, how can we make sure that, that they're being reached in addition to the homeowners associations?
We do put it in the focus. We could get together and talk about doing a direct mail too, to, to the entire township, putting it in water bills. There's lots of ways we probably could get it into their hands. But yeah, the associations, we have a direct line to the, to the board, so it's a little bit easier. But we can get creative with how we put things on social media, on the website, direct mail, that type of thing.
Thank you.
You might have to specifically state, if you live in the subdivision but don't have a homeowners association with roads as problems, contact us, you know, that kind of thing.
No, we can only ask questions during public comment. During public, no, sir, sir, sorry. Not until after, public comment time is when you can ask questions. And we'll have another one at the end. Yeah, there'll be one at the end. Michael?
So yeah, there's two public forums, one in the beginning and one at the end. But I was glad to see Sunflower subdivision on this list for 2021, because recently, speaking about newspaper articles, there was an article about Sunflower subdivision, about Swanmere, right, which is the nemesis of the township. Could potentially be the worst road in Canton Township from a Pacer rating. My recollection isn't entire, entirely 100% accurate, but I, but I do believe addition, initially there was a, Sunflower had initially approached the township about doing an SAD, and I, and I believe the total cost at the end turned out to be roughly $10,000 per household. And there's a lot of households in Sunflower Village. And in order for that to pass, and for the township to assess that and then do that work, it requires a certain number of individual households approving that, that amount, and that failed. Unfortunately, that wasn't included in the story, but, but that said, and I can speak for myself, but I can partially talk about the conversations we have, right? So you have the roads millage, you have the local roads program, which was created by the roads millage. And we asked former supervisor Phil LaJoy to sit on that, that internal roads group. We asked former state representative and township planner Jim Castillo to sit on that group as well. And we have a Sunflower resident who sits on that group with us, right? Khalil Kanda. So we did the best we could to get good representation of individuals who understand the issues, the problems, and then can create some accountability for the residents as well. And so the hard part, I think, is in 2018, the residents decided to tax themselves. And not all residents, obviously, but, but more residents than not chose to tax themselves. And we had kind of laid out a plan to them, which was we would do X, Y, and Z with this money if this tax passes. And I think the group has, we've been nimble, we've made amendments here and there where we couldn't do some projects, we rolled money over into the next year to try to maximize how we spend it correctly, or recommend that the board spends it, rather. But we also have avoided large deviations from what the voters were told before they voted on it, right? That fidelity to the message that was put out there before the millage was placed on the ballot. And, and we've always kept that really central to the core of what we do. We didn't want to bait and switch people, right? You paid for fixing the roads, now we're going to spend it on sidewalks, or whatever. We're gonna, you know, we didn't talk about paving roads, but now we're going to spend it all on paving roads, you know? We really didn't want to see large deviations, especially early on in the program, right? We've done a substantial amount of work with the county on larger roads, and we're seeing some pretty aggressive improvement on Pacer ratings in the township on major roads. And we are, we've implemented the structure fixes, right? We're working on sewers, storm sewers, sanitary sewers, issues, structural issues in roads that don't require a match in neighborhood streets. But for neighborhoods, we wanted to have that match, because as some trustees will tell you, 30% of the, over 30% of the population of Canton Township lives on private streets. You know, a lot of townships, believe it or not, do have local roads millages. Canton is the only community I'm aware of where we spend that money on major streets. In almost every one of those communities, it's spent on local streets, and local streets only, and they don't require a match. But here's part of the reason why. Canton is one of the few townships that is heavily suburban, right? Most townships who have roads millages are rural. They don't have a lot of site condominiums that have been established in the last 10 to 15 years that are all private streets. And so we wanted to balance those two things. How do you honor the taxpayer who will only benefit when they drive on a major road? They can't, that, that money can't be used locally on their street. And that's where the match program came in, and that's where capping it at that, at that $200,000 came in. But yeah, you're right. I mean, we can't address a $10 million infrastructure problem in Sunflower strategically right now where the roads millage is. That can't be the only vehicle. It can be a part of the equation. And so we've, I think the challenge for the township, the county, and our little roads group is, how do we stay faithful to the mission that the voters approved, and then how do we use this as a tool to try to bring those resources in to help people in Sunflower? Or Glengarry, who is also a community or neighborhood that's ridden with ASR. And then how do you, you know, and then how do you support the ones who, right, who don't have enough? Because ultimately, we know the roads task force said, we have a $240 million problem, and we have a $110 million solution, which that tells you 100% of the work can't get done. And, and that's, that's just, that's just where we're at. So your point is well taken. It's in the back of our minds. We're working on it. But again, the goal right now, especially early on, is fidelity to what the voters approved. In seven, eight years, when the lane miles lurking good, when the, when we don't have neighborhoods who are willing to match anymore, when Ford Road is done, there's a reallocation there, right? 15% is going towards state roads. When Ford Road is done, that 15% or, or $1 million or $800,000 can be then put towards more local roads. It could be put towards intersection improvements, like the blinking red light at Palmer and Sheldon. There's, and those are discussions that we have in the local roads group that we bring forward to you all, or us all, rather, at this bench where we could then sell, okay, let's, let's pivot now, but let's do it a decade after the tax was passed and do it in a transparent and open manner. Sorry. I talk too much.
Summer, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, and I don't want to reiterate a lot of what Michael said, but Jade, just a suggestion, I know we had our last Roads Advisory Committee meeting in June, I think, where we talked about the five-year plan, and we also talked about like, what does a road millage look like? What's the road improvement plan look like a few years from now, once these applications from local homeowners associations slow down, because we all know that that's probably going to happen at some point. And so maybe it's just worth having another conversation with that group, and maybe just that conversation, right? Take an hour to brainstorm potential solutions, because I do agree that Sunflower and Glengarry present problems, that this millage is not going to address on its own. But one thing I do want to point out is prior to the millage passing in 2018, homeowners associations had to pay 100% of the cost, right? And now I'm looking at these numbers, and we're doing $3.8 million of work, and residents are only kicking in a half a million dollars, and I think that's incredible.
Anyone else? And we do have the five-year plan on, on the website that you presented to the board a couple of weeks ago.
Can I just kick in real quick? I swear I'll be brief. I'm sorry for double dipping.
Sure, go ahead.
You know, they just passed more money than God on infrastructure recently, right? So that's something we could start talking about, potentially finding a way specifically for ASR to be a target for some of that money, right? Because what we know about that ASR is it's not always structurally sound, and so there could be a public safety part, piece to that too. So that's a piece, and I haven't looked at the bill, I don't know, I know a lot of it goes to bridges, but that money that just passed, the Senate, that's going to be signed by the president and that will be distributed to the states for infrastructure solely, we could, it would be super awesome if we could start aggressively looking at ways to put that to work in Canton Township, specifically addressing ASR, like Canton Center, like Sunflower, like Glengarry, you know, all of the known actors that we have out there, all those little problems.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, great. Can I please have all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item G2, consider approval for the purchase order increase to Miracle Recreation for Playground Equipment from Leisure Services.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the renewal of Cisco VoIP, wait.
G2 rather than C2.
That's why I was correct.
Yeah, you were correct.
Yep, G2.
Telephone Systems Licensing, which provides the township's telephone system in an amount not to exceed $53,950.
Thank you, yes. So request approval of Cisco VoIP licensing and support renewal. The township phone system was upgraded in 2018. The township must renew its licensing with Cisco in order to maintain technical support and access to software upgrades. In addition to this support, Cisco has changed its licensing model from perpetual per phone to per-user based subscription. The township's current support expires in August 2021. Renewal of this service is critical to provide uninterrupted access to Cisco technical support for the upcoming three years. Joe, did you have anything to add to that? No? Okay. Any questions? Great, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G3, consider approval to accept the shuttered venue operators grant.
Madam Supervisor, I'm going to do this in one motion. I move to accept the shuttered venue operations grant in the amount of $187,512.26 to be used towards covering costs of staff wages, fringes, utilities, and deposits on shows for the upcoming season at the Village Theater, and to amend the budget as attached.
Support.
Thank you. In early 2021, Canton Leisure Services, with the help of the Finance Department, applied to the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Assistance for the shuttered venue operators grant. In July, Canton was notified that it was eligible to receive $187,512.26 in grant funding. Leisure Services is recommending to use a non-match grant awards towards offsetting costs of staff wages, fringes, utilities, and contracted services for shows at the Village Theater. Greg, do you have anything to add?
No, just appreciate the Finance Department as well as Janilo from my department for pulling this grant together in short order. It was a lot of stops and starts to getting this application, because the, the organization we had to apply through had many technical difficulties, so they did a great job of pulling this together so we can get this grant, help offset some of our costs, and it'll help us going forward. us going forward.
Great, congratulations on the grant. Anyone else, any questions? Anya?
Yeah, I just have a comment that this is a great opportunity, because, you know, in the last one year, we have had issues with performance venues being shut down, and we couldn't let our residents use them, and this is a great opportunity for using this grant for helping our community come back to performing acts, especially the Jericho Theater, the Village Theater. So, I really appreciate this happening. Thank you.
Anyone else? Kate?
Yeah, I want to echo what Trustee Ganguly said. I want to thank your staff and your department, Greg, Director Hohenberger, and also the Finance Department for putting this together and, and applying for it, and glad that we got it. Thank you.
Stephen?
Greg, congratulations for all of us and the community. Do you have an idea as to what it will be used for? I don't know how much it is against the budget for this area. And will the community acting groups, dance troops, and things like that see any benefit themselves from being able to, maybe through lower fees or something like that?
That's not something that we've explored to this point. We could certainly look into that. We're looking at really some of our operating costs or utilities out there, as well as our staff wages, and then some performances that we're looking at. Our new theater coordinator is excited to bring in some new shows and opportunities at the theater, so we're looking at potential, some shows like that, as well as offsetting entertainers at our Fall Festival, I'm not sure, I think that we're going to call it the Picnic on the Park on September 24th. And we're looking at pulling together to do the fireworks that were passed up for Liberty Festival, have a few entertainers there, and this grant will help to offset those expenses as well.
Okay, good things. The operating costs should help rental fees and things like that, so.
Yes.
Anyone else? At our weekly staff meeting, actually, just to let everybody know, we are starting a Grants Committee, because we have a lot of grant opportunities that we'd like to start applying for, so, a lot more to come on that. Okay, can I have, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Item G4. Consider Approval of Clerk's Request to Pursue Certificate in Election Administration from Humphrey School of Public Affairs at the University of Minnesota.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the clerk's request to pursue the certificate in election administration from the Humphrey School of Public Affairs at the University of Minnesota, and authorize the total expenditure of up to $12,000 over a two-year period in accordance with tuition rates and billing schedules.
Support.
Thank you. After the 2020 election, it is clear that America's election system faces an urgent need for professionals who are well-trained in the latest technology and techniques, and the field and well-versed in the legal and policy challenges facing our voting system. The Humphrey School of Public Affairs at the University of Minnesota responded to this widespread need with a pioneering online program to prepare professionals in election administration. Cost of the program is $11,688. The clerk has determined it is in the best interest of furthering the board goals of a welcoming community and quality infrastructure, as elections are considered critical infrastructure by the Department of Homeland Security, to use existing budgeted funds to pursue the certificate in election administration. The clerk was notified of acceptance into the postgraduate program on July 27, 2021. Clerk Segrist, do you want to add to that?
Well, I wrote the summary intentionally, because it's pretty all-encompassing. I'm trying to avoid doing what I always do, which is spend way more time talking about something than I necessarily need to, because I was just about to explain about how all 50 states run their elections. Suffice to say, residents expect competence, quality, proficiency, transparency in the conduct of elections. We strive to do that here locally. We had, we ran a phenomenal election in 2020, and, you know, and I'm very proud of that. There is changes to the process, the process has become far more litigious, there is a substantial number of individuals who, to this date, still question the outcome of the election, and so that's a significant thing as well. There's more requirement on election officials, the margin for error is lesser and lesser. It used to be more of a civic kind of thing, people would be like, "Oh, it's the local elections, this is fun, we'll all go down there and we'll vote." And now, both political parties and America in general has decided to take the kind of partisan disruptive rancor and drive it into the actual process of conducting the elections. That's something we have never seen to this degree before, and so we're, so we're doing everything we possibly can to try to make sure that we're prepared for that, right? How do we help push with legislation, right? How do we advocate for the best experience for voters in Canton Township? And then how do we conduct those elections proficiently? This program is award-winning, it is pioneering, the instructors are individuals who are not necessarily academics in and of themselves, but they are individuals in the field, the Director of Elections for Colorado, Director of Elections for large counties in California, individuals in the field doing the day-to-day work.
Thank you, any questions? Summer?
Just a quick comment. So, in my day job, I work with election administrators across the state of Michigan, from the Secretary of State's office to local clerks, to county clerks. And I think the approach, Michael, that you have on professional development, wanting to learn more, learning from best practices, I think it's really important, and I think it, it shows, you know, greatness from your office. You know, when you won the Clearinghouse Award, I think for innovation in elections from the U.S. Elections Committee, I think that's something that Canton can hang its hat on. And so, I appreciate your willingness to want to learn more about your field and to be, you know, an expert at running elections. I wish we saw that from all of the clerks. I think they all have various experiences and come into it with, you know, different priorities, but I think all of, all of your fellow clerks can learn from you.
Anyone else? Stephen?
Thank you. So, a while back, I don't remember when, but we decided that all our departments, as best to their ability or the availability, should become certified, and nationally certified in their fields. And we have done that in many of our departments in this organization. I think everybody here represents a certified organization, and I don't know if there is the ability in the clerk's office to become nationally certified. I'm sure if there were, Michael would be pressing on that to do, to do just that. But anything to become more, anyone, any way to become better and approach the best of, of an organization in the state or nationally is, I'm all for that, because these jobs are too important, that all, all these departments, yours too, Diane, that we need to make sure that we do this, and this seems like a step in that direction, so I'm all for it.
Yeah, if I can just briefly, when I was elected in 2016, outgoing clerk Terry Bennett, in her office, told me, "Michael, never turn down an educational opportunity, no matter what. As you go through this field, never say no to any type of educational opportunity, or accreditation, or certification, because every single thing that you will learn will be crucial." And, and that's evidenced in kind of her being elected Clerk of the Year, I think in 2014 or 15, and her serving on the Michigan Association Municipal Board, Clerks Board of Directors. And so, I took that to heart, and it's something that I think I've tried to put to work. So, thank you.
Kate?
So, I just wanted to echo everybody else, and also say congratulations on your acceptance to the program, Clerk Segrist, and also say that this really shows your dedication to continuous improvement, and so I really think this is going to be a great thing. So, thank you.
Anya?
Yeah, probably, I didn't want to be left behind, but I just wanted to first congratulate Clerk Segrist for being accepted to this program. But, and not just for the, you know, the Election Department or certification, and coming from the corporate world, I think a continuous training, professional development, and our organization investing in that for, for the employees is very important. And I think this is a great opportunity to learn and further understand, and use those skills to better serve our community.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, good job. So, can I have a vote on the motion, please? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Last item is G5. Consider Appointments to Canton Cares Advisory Committee.
Madam Supervisor, I move to appoint Akil Kapuswala, Joyce Jones, and Carol Allard to the Canton Cares Advisory Committee for a three-year term, to expire 8/10/2024.
Thank you. There are currently three vacancies on the Canton Cares Fund Advisory Committee. The vacancies were promoted on social media and in the May Focus Newsletter. We received eight applications, seven of which responded to our email on scheduling an interview. Six applicants showed up to their interviews. Three individuals were chosen unanimously by the interviewing committee. Akil Kapuswala, Joyce Jones, and Carol Allard, and some of them are with us remotely today. The bylaws allow for up to seven individuals on the committee, and the current board would like to have all seven spots filled, to have as much input as possible. The bylaws of this fund state that all appointments and reappointments are made by the Board of Trustees, except in the case of an individual vacating their term before the expiration date. Each of these individuals would serve a three-year term. Any questions? Summer?
Just a comment. We interviewed some really great people for this commission, and I think we wanted to appoint them all. And we had to narrow it down, and I think we selected three great, three great folks. I just want to, you know, reiterate the point, and I think I'm going to say this every time, that we approve these nominations, is it's really great that we change the process, and that it's not only held by the Supervisor's Office, that the trustees and the department that oversees this, the whatever board or committee is involved in the process. And I think it's great that we, you know, have a standardized application process, and we advertise it in the focus, because we are getting people that really care about our community, and even if we're not able to put them on that particular board or commission, we find a good place where we think that they will, they will be, where they will fit. So, thank you, this was great.
Thank you, anyone else? Stephen?
Echo what Summer said. I felt that everybody who applied to this one was strong enough to serve on it, so it was tough picking just three. And what's good about that is, we told the, the department head that if there are other openings, they, she should fill them with some of the others that interviewed. So, I think it shows the strength of the people in our community that are coming out for these positions, and just, I know we had a presentation from Canton Cares a few months ago, and so you all know what they do, but for the community out there, Canton Cares is affiliated with the township, but it is separate, and it is a, it is a charitable fund that's available for things like benefiting seniors, veterans, youths, those with disability in our community, and also, can also be used for, for example, putting on award ceremonies for our, our employees, like the fire or the police department. And it is solely funded through donations from our community.
Anyone else? Great, yes, this committee is, like you said, the interview committee. We have been able to allow a lot more residents to participate in committees than has ever happened before. Kate?
All right, I just wanted to thank everyone who applied for their willingness to serve their community.
Michael?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I remember we had a, an open meeting discussion about the Canton Cares Fund. And I'm glad that these appointments are coming before the board. I understand in the last few years, there was a breakdown in the process. I was very concerned that the organization had not been faithful to its bylaws as approved by the Board of Trustees, that these appointments were supposed to go to the Board of Trustees, especially with an organization that's handling large sums of money, especially if the township or the Supervisor's Office is going to be fundraising and helping this organization fundraise. There needs to be that level of transparency and accountability. Part of it's because of my background in accounting and in tax work. There are substantial penalties when you don't follow the rules, and I'm glad that we've caught this up and we fixed this issue. And I really want to make sure that all people going forward, associated with the township in whatever capacity, follow the bylaws of an organization, follow the legal rules, follow the statute and regulations, to the T. When you're, when you're, when you're handling this, you know, it's, it's very important. And so, I'm grateful that we've caught this up, that we've brought this out, and that this has been done openly and transparently. So, thank you for that, Madam Supervisor.
Thank you. Yes, I'm glad we were able to clean it up also. Thank you. Can I have a vote on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Great, thank you. So, the next item on the agenda is going back to public comment, and let's try to get Mr. McCausland on. He is on again. Joe, we might need help with this, we're having a hard time getting Mr. McCausland. I'm going to say allowed to talk. He's on the Zoom. Yes, hands raised. He keeps getting transferred to panelists, but it's not, the audio's not working. Mr. McCausland, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, yay, we can hear you. Please go ahead with your comment.
Okay, just so, little information, you need to, I needed to update the latest version of Zoom to interact with you.
It did say that, you're right.
That was the problem. So, anybody at home, update to the latest version of Zoom. Thank you for bringing this technology to us, where we could actually interact with you from home. I think that's marvelous. Thank you.
Thank you.
One comment. Second comment, listening tonight, I don't think it's fair to attack the board. We've all had a hard time, we've all had a hard year. To come up there and attack the board is just unfair. Been a citizen of this community for 40 years, got here when there was 30,000 people, now we're in excess of 100 some. You can't compare it. So, coming up there and attacking the elected officials, it's not, not good at this time. I'm sure everybody will try their hardest. I know Supervisor Hudak, I'd like to thank you, even during this tough time, you've been the most empathetic supervisor that Canton Township has ever had, as far as opening up to the citizens, returning phone calls, having an open ear, and having an open-door policy. I've, even though the township has been with the virus, you've always managed to return my email or my phone call, and you've always had a true, I could tell you have a true concern for the citizen, and you've lived here for a long time also. I'd like to thank you for, for serving, for being the Canton Township Supervisor. As far as the trash goes, I would, I would revert that back to previous boards, when the trash hauler was allowed to sell to a large conglomerate, and bigger is not always better. But I'm sure with some heads to get together, maybe we have to look at different ways to pick up the trash through this difficulty. I know everybody's having a problem with drivers. Driver shortages are huge, it's going to continue that way. Don't take it out on the crews, they're hard-working guys. Tell them thanks and throw them a water, that's what I do. Because they're, they're out there working hard, and they're picking up a lot of brush, and they're picking up a lot of storm damage, and they're picking up a lot of trash. This community puts out a lot, a lot of trash, a lot more than we did 40 years ago. You know, 40 years ago, we used to have a brush fire, we'd be able to burn our brush. Now, we can't do that anymore. So, my reason tonight, after getting through all that, my reason tonight, my, my primary reason is, I would like us to have some input going forward on this Willow Run Air Show. This last week has just been very intrusive, as far as the air show seems to be moving on the off-practice times and the actual air show times over Canton Township even further every year. We have a, we have a shelter dog who's, who's very sensitive to the noise, and we actually had to take her for all four days out of Canton Township, because she just could not take, take the noise of the aircraft. On Saturday morning, it was horrendous over this way. The, the aircraft was, was revving up and taking flights right over the top of my home. my home, shaking, shaking my house, the cabinets, the dishes, everything else. I know those guys are professionals. I know they're, they're skilled pilots, probably the best in the world, but I would certainly hate to see an accident happen, where we would, we would lose an aircraft into the community, or adjacent community. I think the time has come that we have some input in that. It's a form of noise pollution. I'm not anti-airshow. I think that just the duration was very long this year. It had both teams here, which was the first time in a long time, and the, the aircraft was substantial, and the aircraft was loud, and it was very intrusive to, to the whole community, I think, at large. And I don't think I'm the only one who will say that. I've talked to numerous amount of people, and they, they're very concerned about their pets and their animals. There's just, there's dogs out here in my neighborhood that were just howling in agony when those aircraft came over, as people have them outside, and, you know, they're trying to be out, you know, carrying on with their normal business. So, that's all I have. But I, I'd like to say, let's all just stick together, and let's try to calm down, and not point the finger at each other. Let's try to, let's try to get through it together, and not just attack each other at this time. It's not a time to attack each other. Doesn't matter what side of the aisle you're on. We all have to work at this as a community. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCausland. Thank you for your kind words. And just to let you know about the airshow, I did get a number of calls on that. My Daisy's 12 years old, so she turned deaf this year, so she didn't shake as much as she did, but a lot of people did. So we did file some complaints with Willow Run Airport to let people know about that. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I actually called the airshow manager, and he's supposed to call me back, the, the director of the Yankee Air Museum, who, who has some input in that. But I think it's more, we have to stand back as a community and say, you know, kind of enough's enough. We're, we're heading to this time. It's, it's becoming, it's becoming intrusive, and we're going to have to push back a little bit, because my dog is eight, and she's got a little bit of a rough past, and it's just, you know, I, I just took her away for the four days, and four days was gone. Like, you know, I spent driving it around, you know, we spent, we spent riding around. She loved it, but my four days were gone.
Thank you.
But thank you again. Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Okay, um, let me see. Do we have any comments in the room that have not already been said? Mr. Parker, please.
My name's Bob Parker, live at 68, Osex, Weathersfield. Two comments. One, about the roads. And I know that times are changing, and I look at the 30% that we are doing on local roads, and I think maybe it's time that we increase that percentage. We've supported Wayne County in helping get secondary roads done, help, you know, we, we pay the Wayne County tax, we pay the Kent tax, we pay the Michigan Sassilyne tax, and when you approach residents about an SAD, they pretty much go through the roof. So, and I understand that, you know, and I understand that sunflower is a big area. Understand we have a lot of things. But I, I think at some point, maybe after 2023, maybe we ought to think about making it 40% rather than 30% for local roads. One other second comment, since Wayne County continues to ignore Lambeth and Swanmere, if we could at least get them to, on a regular basis, use a street sweeper. There's so much debris, so much concrete. It, anytime a car goes down, we get bits of concrete flying up on the sidewalks, and I guess I get concerned about kids getting hurt or someone getting hurt. And I know they did do it once, which was great, and I know you encouraged them. And I would, you know, ask that maybe we continue, maybe, you know, on a monthly basis, at least in the warmer weather. And those are my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Something that hasn't been talked about before?
I live in Huntington Place, and Hutch Paving Company came in, in 2017, in October, and did the subdivision. March of 2018, the road was completely, it started falling apart. And I don't know, who do we talk to about this? I mean, like, the asphalt, if you ask different people how thick it's supposed to be, it's not even a half-inch thick. And when they made complaints up here, no one ever followed through with it. What do you stand on that one? Is it you that we talk to about the roads? Hutch Paving Company. And our road is, that subdivision is completely destroyed now, because y'all come in and put the sidewalks in, and the sidewalks that they've already, the slabs, some of them that they already replaced, they're going in and they have to replace them again. They haven't even been in in a month.
Yep. I can have our engineering department go out and take a look. Hutch Paving does no longer do any work for the township. We'll have to go out and take a look at the, at the road.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, great. Anything else about the directors? You want to talk about any of the events? I know Greg gave a couple of events coming up. You want to talk about that?
Yeah, probably the biggest one for us will be, well, we have two more Thursday night concerts coming up. Those have been a great success this summer, so if you haven't made it out yet, please come out and check those out. And then we are working on a 9/11 memorial event that will be happening at the Amphitheater in Heritage Park. And September 24th, a fireworks show for a much scaled-back event. It won't be anything like Liberty Fest, but a couple concerts in the evening on Friday evening, followed by fireworks with the 25th as a rain-out day.
Great, thanks. Any other directors? No, nothing? Any board members? Any comments? Nothing? Okay. It's good to be back, great. Keep watching the calendar to see if, you know, the schedule of the events, and in terms of, if the numbers start to go up, you know, if we return to virtual, or if we continue this as hybrid, which is, continue as we continue to watch the numbers out there with the variance going on in COVID.
I may, I would just ask, I want us to stay nimble and make decisions and be smart if we have to go virtual again, or I just, my, my biggest concern is if we, if we move virtual in-person, virtual in-person is, I don't want to see a situation where residents show up thinking there's a meeting, there's not a meeting. So, if we do decide to go back to virtual, like, it should be somewhat consistent, or if we stay in-person, I, I just don't want to make that decision multiple times. So I would just ask that we try to think of some type of consistent way so that people can, if, I just don't want to, I don't want to give people whiplash.
Right.
I don't know if anybody else feels that.
Good point. And I will always be here. I know Diane and I always, and you sometimes are from the township, so if we do, we'll look at the laws and what's happening.
Yeah, and I was going to say one thing. If we do go back Zoom, you know, we will let the residents know. We post on Fridays, and so we want, you know, always check the website to make sure, because we don't want someone to come to the township hall if we're totally Zooming the meetings. We want to make sure that people can go online and, and come to the meetings. But, yeah, I agree with Clerk Seegrist, so we shouldn't be bouncing back and forth, because it is very confusing to the residents, so.
Summer?
No, I definitely agree with that. I know that people don't always pay close attention to where we're going to be, so I think if it's predictable, it'll be a little bit easier. One thing I think that I heard earlier today was that the five-year roads plan was up on the website. Can we get that posted on Facebook or social media, so residents know where to find it?
Sure. Okay. Anyone else? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.